Order. Roll call. Steve?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Ken?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Citizens Forum. No.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hey, this is Royal, man still.
Royal, can I have your address?
Uh, four twenty Broad Street.
Thank you.
Uh, like the, I have some questions and concerns about the fireworks, not even regarding anything with truck pull wise that has also been talked about and brought to my attention as of not concerning the actual rodeo livestock, but the actual contestant horses. On, you know, they're not always necessarily uh, around all the noises and stuff as much near as like the livestock are. And a lot of them, you know, they get new horses and their year leans or two years or whatever getting broke. The, you know, train to do that and some of the horses, I mean, they could be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. And the concern is, is, you know, like they're not wanting the contestant horses to get hurt to, and contestants not wanting to come back for any following because of that. And then also who, you know, one of the contestant horses gets hurt, you know, who would pay for that because of the fireworks?
Okay.
And then also on the distancing uh, deal for the fireworks and also with other, what is it? NS, hold on, sorry, I gotta pull it up quick. Be the, let me read here. Be the, according to the NFPA standards, it is supposed to be the weather, I don't know if it's saying two hundred and twenty, because it says two hundred and twenty feet on the contract, but in the email it says three hundred feet. And NF, NFPA safe distances is from fall structures and there is a structure in the city dump that no matter where they place their firework trailer in there would be within that fire range.
Okay.
And then also depending on firework approval or denial, I would like to ask that the city dump, if it does get denied, that the city dump be open for parking Saturday for truck pulls during the day and rodeo at night? To have, you know, adequate space and parking for people to come down there to enjoy the events. And then on top of also we are previous agreement with the towing and all that stuff, how Joel talked about the tow truck and all that stuff, it would eliminate the issue of having to deal with that.
All right. Anything else, Royal?
Uh, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll put myself on mute.
Thank you.
Can we read this, the note from Diana Holstein? So that Royal can hear it.
Uh, thank you. Royal, are you gonna stay on the line?
Yes, I'm on here. I've got to put myself on mute.
No, you're good.
I'm wa- I'm watching it, so you say my name and give me a little second, I gotta flip the recording, does open it up and unmute myself.
Well, there is that piece, but we'll probably discuss that when we get to the fireworks piece. Anything else for Citizens Forum?
I feel that if somebody from the rodeo has a problem with the fireworks, they should be here. It's telling us why, not someone from the truck pull telling us about horses.
Okay. Anything else for Citizens Forum? If nothing, we're moving on to business. First item of business is discussion and action on the old settlers' alcohol permit.
Move approval of the permit.
Second.
Further discussion about the permit?
I, I got some uh, stuff that I wrote down um, regarding this. Uh, there's issues with the, the permitted um, there was no proof of financial liability submitted with their application. It just says that they have gram shop, but there's no certificate showing they actually have insurance.
They have drams.
Um.
I have the drams.
The second issue that I had with it was the mailing address says one hundred Army Post. As we talked about before, there is no mail lock at one hundred Army Post. So her, her application was not filed properly. Um, and then the third issue that I noted is the map that they provided did not thoroughly identify beer garden. Um, there's a, a line drawn that I think is supposed to be the beer garden, but it doesn't actually say beer garden around it where, where there's an entrance or further exit from it. So, um, I, there's just, there's, the, the permit request is not filled out.
Okay. Further discussion?
Can I?
Okay.
Um, the whole park, the address for the whole park is one hundred Army Post Route. According to the DIS at the Story County Accessors.
Okay. Did you hear that, Joel?
Right, and she has, yes, they have, they have the one hundred down as being the physical address, but they also have it written down as one hundred to Army Post as the mailing address. That is not correct.
Okay.
The physical address is correct, but the mailing address is not correct.
I think she has a post office that's delivered to Becky.
This is address or location.
Yeah, right here.
So we need to have it changed up. That needs to be changed then before we can.
Right now we have motion for to approve the permit. So.
We have a second.
We have a second. We are in discussion. Is there any further discussion on this?
Yeah, as far as the insurance, what do they have? Are there papers that they submitted to the state?
That as an insurance policy?
Because I heard something on there that it just says dram shop on here, should it say the insurance company's name?
So they get submitted through the dram? Site, I believe.
Yeah, that's dram has to approve it.
He forms it.
Yeah.
Is that what you've been to do?
There's a copy.
The only copy I have, so don't steal it.
Don't spill more water over it. Got it.
The dram has to, to approve it before it even comes to me.
Anybody else want to see this?
Well, I've seen it. You want to see it, Steve?
Joel, did you want me to read the rest of that email or you good with being able to talk on here?
Um, you wanna talk about the, the first part that I talked about or?
No, not yet. We can probably save it a little bit longer.
Well, I think that's all I had to refer that for the alcohol permit.
Okay. There you go. Further discussion, I guess, for both? Uh, Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joel?
No.
Ken?
No. I'd be interested in knowing uh, from the individuals who voted no, why they felt they no would be.
I'm voting no because I feel this meeting is not called for. It's not an emergency on my part for somebody's part of not being uh, ready for it. So that's why.
And I would concur with that, that uh, you know, if they filed this at timely manner, it would be time to fix it. Um, and still have our meeting, but they, they chose to wait and cause the city extra money to be spent out to have an extra meeting. So I, that's why I say no.
Well, I would like to remind the council that uh, in the past uh, the council has approved the permit at regular meeting with the subject to having the uh, liquor license uh, in place. And we chose not to do this at the last meeting. And uh, having been an individual who applied for permits, uh, liquor permits in the past for old settlers, uh, they do not let you start applying uh, before April. And I did, on the first day, applied. Uh, and still didn't get things approved until a week before the event because uh, dram shop seems to take, dram shop seems to take over. No, you apply months ahead. So I don't see a uh, problem uh, with either old settlers uh, uh, or with the approval of permit.
Uh, I would like clarification. You said you filed the, the license?
In past years, when I was the treasurer, uh, for about eight years, I applied for uh, uh, the liquor license on behalf of old settlers. Uh, haven't done it since twenty twenty, but uh, uh, in the years before that, I did. And no matter how early I started, uh, dram shop seemed to grind on. I think that Deb uh, could verify everything that I just said. She said yes, even though you can't hear her.
I just needed clarification because it sounded like you did this one, so I just, I just wanted clarification on that.
Joel, on the June eighteenth council meeting that we had, Becky did submit a letter. And it stamped June thirteenth that she uh, approval for beer permit, dram insurance, waiting process through double day insurance in Anthony. This will be for the Van Stan area only. We will also need a permit for fireworks, so she's notifying the council. And this was at the July eighteenth meeting.
Right, but she just finally submitted the permit and the permit is not correct.
Okay, when'd you, when did you get your, start your permit for God?
May.
In May? Yep. Takes forever.
All right. Moving on to discussion, action on old settlers' fireworks permit.
Move approval of the permit.
Really?
Second it.
Discussion.
That's great.
I don't.
Yes.
Do you have a discussion? I was doing.
Yeah, my discussion was, my question to Steve is um, what changed your mind from last month? I uh, do not believe that fireworks is an essential part of old settlers. Uh, I don't believe it's necessary. They've done everything that they need to do in order to get a permit. And uh, as such, it would just be a uh, personal opinion as opposed to uh, what's best for the community.
I think the fireworks is something that people in town look forward to, and since old settlers is for the community, it should be included.
Further discussion?
Uh, so the point that I'd like to make on this one, um, once again, the map that was included is part uh, that's an example, and it shows that the fireworks would be set off in the middle of the park, um, which we know that's not where they're supposed to be, but there was no map actually submitted um, with the application. Uh, there's also no proof of financial liability by either the fireworks company, uh, per section uh, five A, or they had the old settlers who are responsible, supposed to set, uh, have another certificate of liability um, per section five B of that contract. Um, the contract um, submitted uh, has, has not been signed by the fireworks company representative. And then the three hundred foot corner on the day that they sent the email on, um, if we set it off where that grid point is, where that latitude and longitude is, it would actually extend into the spectator, spectator area of the truck pull. So it would have to be moved further south, um, so that it would not be affecting the, the truck pull area.
And wait, where did you get your information on the?
The permit has an uh, X Y coordinate for the center of the uh, displayed period, the display.
Does this latitude and longitude, is that from the digital or where did it come from?
From J and M Display.
Okay. You get to us pretty well on this. There is insurance application, what do you have, Steve? Royal?
Royal, you still on? Take your phone off mute. I'll talk.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Sue.
Uh, on the first page of this J and M Display, it shows that there is insurance.
That wasn't Royal that was talking.
I, I don't, I didn't ask goddamn anything, that was Joel.
Never mind, Joel. Never mind, Royal.
And then, does this? This is them asking that it be clarified the safe fallout zone would be a minimum of three hundred feet. Is that what Royal was talking about?
Joel, you mean?
I just wanted to get that, Joel, okay.
Joel, is that what you?
They asked for three hundred feet. And there, I'm looking at the first page of this meeting. It says insurance extension, yes, but it doesn't say, it doesn't, it doesn't, there's no certificate of liability provided with the, the permit request. So how do, just because somebody says they have insurance, doesn't mean they actually have it. You have to have proof of insurance, and so I'm asking for a copy of the certificate of liability to show they have proof of insurance.
Is the other part you were talking about uh, under the, under the permit for the name of designated pyrotechnician, is that what you're talking about, you didn't sign, or don't, we don't know who?
Uh, it's thirty, I think it's the last page of the permit request.
Oh, okay. Oh, so.
Here.
Joel, in section, in section five.
Becky says it's a fire.
Right, okay, I see what you're talking about, but, but then up there where location of the event, second page, underneath the location where the longitude, latitude is, that wasn't, there's nobody named as the pyrotechnician there either.
Right.
Like uh, Joel has a point with the uh, coordinates given. It's closer than three hundred feet to the uh, area used by the truck pull for parking. Uh, and it looks like.
Is it within two hundred and twenty feet? Because that's what the contract actually says, though.
But you, the, the fallout doesn't have to be three hundred feet?
Two twenty.
Two twenty is what they.
Looking for it right now.
Well, it's more than two twenty.
Is it?
Yeah.
They're talking about.
Yeah, the two twenty would be fine, but, but they turned around and asked for three hundred on an email.
I think, let me read this email too. From Diane, the lady at the fireworks company. I spoke with Becky Pointer and she asked that I clarify that a safe fallout distance for your show would be a minimum of three hundred. She repeated the question. I don't see that as saying three hundred is their, their number. I did call the company because I, at the time, a month ago, when we were having this discussion, and I'm looking for the email, which I sent to Becky, as well as the contract, and they confirmed two twenty in an email that I received. And it's based on the size of the shells, and if you look at the bottom of page two, seventy feet per inch of shell diameter. So evidently it's three and a quarter inches or three something inches is where two twenty would come from there. If you had larger shells, you would need a larger distance. That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, I interpreted the email from, from Diana, that she's clarifying that they need three hundred.
She asked that I clarify. She asked that I clarify three hundred. I don't see her saying this, and let me find the email, I've been looking. I'm not tech savvy, but in that email, I asked them to confirm the time that they needed, which was noonish, to have access to the point where they were setting up, because that was one, one question that we had to make best use of our citizens.
So I spoke with Becky Pointer and she asked that I clarify that the safe fallout zone for your show would be, would be a minimum of three hundred.
She just repeating what Becky asked.
Becky asked her to do the.
Becky asked that. This Diane isn't saying, yes, it's three hundred, from my interpretation.
And you didn't deny that it wasn't three hundred either.
No. Well, she didn't deny it was a mile or, or anything else, but, but she made no statement on the dis- let me keep looking, I can find it here.
There was no correction to any, to anything on any of the paperwork. And that was only a question. It wasn't a statement.
And if they had followed through and gotten signatures on the contract, then we could follow that contract, but at this point, it's not a valid contract because it's not signed by sellers.
Yes, Deb?
Last year, you guys okayed the fireworks without a signed contract. I've got the last year's contract up, and it wasn't signed either. So it's a mute point at this point.
So, any further discussion on this?
We can ask for, you guys can ask for insurance.
Offered, we have.
Insurance before they do it.
Signing the contract. The person offering the contract uh, would be signing last, so once the city approval comes, so the contractor will sign the contract as they have in the past.
As I said, you guys could ask for proof of insurance before you will release that permit.
They signed the contract, so they're required to provide it. That provides the liability of the company to, the liability is always on the company. Company's shooting fireworks, they have the liability written in their contract, they're providing the insurance, so regardless of whether they have it or not, they're still liable to, to it.
There's what they said.
That section, that section five B says that, that old sellers have to provide some additional insurance.
Well, it said, it said he has, why do they need insurance, don't they? Old settlers.
What's the contract between old settlers and...
There's, it's circled on the same issue, 220.
On that line, the insurance and limitations of liability. Old settlers has liability insurance.
And the proof is where?
And the city has liability insurance on the...
But then again, this is not what the city...
I think this is ridiculous.
This is not what the city...
This is, this is not a city function.
Well, neither is old settlers, neither is the truck pull, neither is the roadie.
Correct.
Any further discussion?
Does, does old settlers carry a general liability policy for a special event? Insurance coverage in an amount sufficient to meet or exceed municipality or industry standards and all applicable requirements of local, state, and federal.
And so you guys can ask for proof of insurance.
Yeah, it's not a difficult thing to provide a certificate of insurance.
So do we modify the motion pending proof of insurance?
So, I move with the, uh, approval, uh, the amended stipulating that old settlers provide insurance as required in, or should, provide proof of insurance as required in 5B of...
I will second this amended motion.
Further discussion on the amended motion? Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
No.
Joel?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I've said that I do not believe that fireworks is essential to old settlers. That I would not vote in favor of it, but, uh, I believe old settlers has, uh, done everything that they can to meet the requirements, so I vote yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to discussion and action on hiring roof curdies Earl Locker PLC for the 24 state audit.
Move approval.
Further discussion?
One question, Dale.
Uh, not at the moment, sorry.
All right, no, you're fine.
Further discussion on the action on the hiring roof curdies Earl Locker PLC for 24 state audit?
Is this the company that did it last time? Yeah, and you had good results in that time? Okay.
So, any more further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
That motion carries. On to discussion, action on storage unit. So... Never got a quote from, um, East Burger in regards to additional storage space building. Never got a estimate of, or an option of what was possible back there. We talked about this last year, we paid $960 last year, or excuse me, well, less than $960 last year.
Eight forty?
Yep, and now we're paying $960. So with that, I just wanted to bring up again the option of buying a, um, truck box trailer.
Container?
Container. They're waterproof, dustproof, dirtproof, and setting it, some places, not a flood room. So, water tower, sewer plant at the top of the hill, down by the city shed. Uh, I saw one this week on Marketplace for $2,700. It's a 20-foot, which is approximately the same size as what the stone, the shit is. So, uh, we can pay the $960 this year, pay $1,000 next year.
Three years is paid off.
Three years is paid off.
Do we have to go yearly? Do we pay? My memory says we had a monthly notice to stop if we wanted to. Is that something else?
You're paying more.
You do, all right.
You get a discount if you...
Can we end it at any time, though? Have we paid the $960? Would we, let's say we use it for three months, we get nine months back, or?
I would say that let's just go to month to month. Unless we are ready to move everything out of there now.
We're not. I would like to see that we, either do, if we switch to a month to month, we look at trying to make this purchase sometime by January.
At X rate months or something, yeah.
Yeah, give us time to get into pass ballroom being completed, make sure we had funds available to purchase. Uh, I know it's not a lot of money, but, um, just those are my, my two cents on it.
Why don't we include it with part of our budget next year, instead of buying it in the current fiscal year?
That's very possible too. Because I'm assuming that our current budget for, for storage units is at the eight forty, so we're going to be over this one year. Of that particular section. Wait, wait, was that a motion, Steve?
I move approval of the, uh, contract for one year and that, uh, we look at purchase and placement of the storage unit as part of the fiscal year 26 budget.
So that is, we're not looking at buying the one off of Marketplace, correct?
Correct.
Becky?
About until next year.
Because my, my thing on Marketplace is you're buying somebody else to do stuff, there's no warranty on it. I would rather look at potential of buying from a company that provides a warranty.
Good point.
It's water for a customer.
Was that your second?
So, Joel...
All right, now we have a second.
Just got a second and we're discussing.
Um, Joel...
Really, you'll give me like, if you, give me, give me one minute, I am actually pulling up outside, I'll be right in.
All right, we'll wait for it.
You got your lights on?
Not anymore.
Everybody else have any, uh, discussion?
You got to come slide in like, what's his name on that?
He's wearing a cape, I'm gonna leak.
Yep, there is, right where the phone come from.
Road three tickets on the way home.
What I was gonna ask you, Joel, was, uh, you were saying something about getting something with a guarantee. Are you looking at getting a brand new one from a company, or, I mean, because...
They're all used.
They're all...
Well, right, right.
You're gonna end up with twice as much or three times as much.
But if you buy it from Billy for Joe Jimbaugh, from Marketplace...
But what, but yeah.
How do you know? This particular, this particular one I saw was a company that sells, so... They're just selling it. Okay.
Somebody who doesn't have a decent...
If it's a company that says, "We warranty this, they won't leak, it won't..." It was a rough price for it. That's what I, that's what I'm concerned about. Yep, understood. Any further discussion on this? Sue? Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Joel? Yes.
Yeah.
Motion carries. On to discussion action on tree removal. Thank you for your tree list, Ken.
You're welcome.
Uh, so this is the list, it gives us a number of trees that we need to be able to put out on our bid. So, I just wanted to be able to have the number to present to the council to show how many we were going to present for bid purchases. Did you by chance look at the trees that were in the Pioneer Cemetery?
No. Okay. I did not. So do you, with them being in your backyard, how many do you think there is back there?
I know there's at least one, and it is huge.
Okay.
Big enough to damage other properties, so... Um, I can't say off the top of my head how many total, probably one or two.
So the ones I did count off the city cemetery were eight. Um, but, uh, Tony said that the four that are in that north section, he could probably just take out with the backhoe because they're small enough that he'd be able to just pop those and then fill in the dirt. There was one up there that apparently, uh, a family member was concerned with because it's pushing their stone up. Um, that they would let that taken down. Thank you.
Thank you.
That they would like that tree taken down. So, so, uh, was, where was it? By Dr. Neglia. Was he an old doctor here or something? By his, by his stone, um, that family was asking to take it down.
How old he is, it's either my doctor that delivered me, Jim.
So 56 total trees.
He delivered me.
And was the tree by Dr. Neglia's stone, uh, diseased or dead? Or is it a live tree and just needs to be removed because of the damage?
I would consider it a live tree.
Okay.
Might have had a few dead limbs on it, but it's a big tree.
So it's one of the core?
It's, if you go up Seventh Street, or not Seventh, Main Street here, and you just keep going, it's just right, right there by the entrance.
Yeah.
Like a big tree there, and then there's a dead tree right next to it. There's, uh...
East, east-west, uh, dead end roads and a little bit beyond that.
And then you also mentioned on here that possibly look at contracting for the trees overhead the streets. We trim to a height required by our ordinance of 15 feet above street level. I don't know if we would get that in the same contract, I think it's two separate types of situations. But we could probably look at maybe hiring an Asperman line to come in and do that. Is there basically a brush cutter that comes along at a height and cleans probably more efficiently than a tree in the work? And so I think they're coming in for...
Is that something staff to do, current staff?
We don't have lift equipment coming...
I don't know if we have the safe equipment to do it. I don't want to see anybody working out of a bucket.
Exactly.
The trees in Maxwell Park, I told Tony to go ahead and mark three more trees in the park with red tape. Take the tape off that line up here at the church house. And, um, mark three other ones with red tape, so that's...
So they did agree to do six?
I don't know about that.
I hear background.
So, was your 33 minus the six? Or was the 33 plus the six?
33 plus the six, there were 39 trees in the park.
Jody's gonna have to plant some more trees.
That's a lot of trees. I need to add 10 more from my, my front.
The one up there by the Methodist Church, Cruff Street, by the, in the garden area, I think was missed.
Yeah, it's a bad shape.
So any concerns with council posting a...
Steve, and Weaver, excuse me, when we were looking at the different paths for the, well, we thought the Heart of Iowa Trail's coming. There was one right at the gate there, going down the hill to the ball fields at Legion Park. Is that Legion Park? Is that, or is it... Okay.
Where the ball field is at?
Yeah. And you commented at the time, it wasn't a real big tree, but it was dead in a door nail. That's right there on the right-hand side as you're going down the hill towards the ball field.
I don't know, too, it was on private property or...
Oh, okay.
Legion Park itself. And that's where I kinda would stop, or kinda, no, like, I mean, there's a line to private property and there's trees or, are they ours or are they theirs, you know, so...
If we get all these taken care of, that's not the end of our responsibility.
Correct.
We may find more like the one that the enters Legion Park, uh, or other trees in the right of way that aren't dead or dying and, uh...
But we want to be careful not to do one on private property to set a precedent.
Right. Okay.
I think this is a really good starting point of cleaning up what we do have left that's dead. And we can monitor and track the remaining as they come. This is in our budget this year. And I'm just asking the council for permission to post the notice of bid applicants. So I have bids, 58 trees, that includes the two that would be at Pioneer Cemetery. If, if there's two, maybe less.
I move approval of the list and the posting, uh, for bid purposes.
Are you including the Pioneer Cemetery?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, a second?
All second.
Further discussion? Andy, Joe?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and then we hire, um, somebody or, like, somebody to do the street trimming.
I would say let's see where we are at with this.
A name that nobody can pronounce, A S B S O N.
Let's see what we have left out of budget after we do this. Because then we can use that same funds, if there's some funds available, and then we can bring it back and ask for bids. Because it may not be Asperman, or some other company that comes to...
We don't have a way out of your bid, with the other ones.
Well, when we get the bid in, we'll know and we'll still be, uh, maybe able, uh, while the leaves are on the tree, to figure out, uh, which ones, I know that my particular locust tree, uh, it's too low and there are leaves on it. But when the leaves are all gone...
You can't reach it?
The branches are a lot higher.
I was asking me.
Did you agree with that?
Yeah.
Good.
Do we want to send out letters to those companies that I sent out before?
Yes, the local companies, please. I think that's just good business for the town. Uh, before we move anything else, Royal had one other question or comment.
Oh. Uh, yeah, so I was just making sure that, uh, since the fireworks approved, our... Uh, yeah, so I was just making sure that, uh, since the fireworks approved our previous agreement, it was six o'clock, two hundred feet from gate, right?
Believe it was five-thirty.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, all right, then, six o'clock.
It was six o'clock.
Yep, that's still in place.
With an access path for the company to get back prior to that.
Yep.
They say five?
Yep. No, it was six o'clock.
It was six forty.
All right, thank you, Royal.
Yep, thank you, you guys have a good night.
You, too.
I have a question.
Joel, Joel, go ahead.
All right, so something else that I had sent to the mayor, um, this was about a meeting that we had on our agendas, um, and it was added primarily because of the short turnaround for these permits, for the all fireworks permits. My, my problem with that is, we always sit and talk about how much money we have in the budget and where we need to watch our budget, and, and then we turn around and we have a private organization request a meeting so that we can get their permits done. Yes, we added on the, the audit and the storage unit, the tree removal stuff on there, but that's stuff that we could have talked about at our next scheduled meeting. This one had to be called an emergency so that we could get this stuff done because Old Settlers Weekend is very near. With that being said, I, the taxpayers are the ones that have to foot the bill for us to be up here tonight, um, and for Deb to have to get overtime on top of her forty hours. Um, and we always talk about not having overtime. What I think is that since the Old Settlers Group is a private organization, that we had to call this meeting for that, um, I feel that they should be responsible for paying the, the twenty-five dollars for meeting cost that each one of the council members gets, as well as any overtime incurred by the city clerk for her overtime work in this meeting.
Do you not remember receiving the letter from Becky telling us, and this was the June eighteenth?
And we are now?
And you weren't here?
Now we're six weeks later, we're doing this.
You weren't here when we had the discussion on the DRAM insurance always being the last minute thing to come in, so it wouldn't have made any difference one way or the other. Either the fireworks was there and the liquor was there, it's no difference.
Moms had their permit turned in, we, I, I didn't know on that one, because I wanted to correct either, but then it got corrected.
Yeah, it wasn't, well, that's what I wanna know, was it corrected? Because that was how we, we passed it, pending corrections.
Yep, it's been corrected.
The address was corrected.
And I've released it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So, so if she had time to get her stuff done, turned in and, and, and gone back again.
You're setting a precedent for everything else, and I do feel that it's wrong.
Well, I, I think that these things need to be addressed, um, you know, the insurance is not something that I take lightly. Uh, when I, when, when a police officer pulls you over, you don't get to just say, yep, I got insurance, and then walk away. You have to provide a, something saying that you have insurance. Same thing with, with alcohol and fireworks permits. You turn that stuff in, we need to have proof before we say, yep, go ahead and do it. That's my opinion.
DRAM insurance.
You guys have it over there somewhere.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we received that when? Did we receive it prior to our last meeting?
No.
Not at the time.
So we would have had to call a special meeting no matter what, that, because of the DRAM insurance not being approved.
If they had, if they had applied, because Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that you could start doing it in April, when you can start doing your permit process.
It would make any difference.
So, I mean, if they would have.
And it didn't make any difference when I did start it in April, we still didn't get it approved until the end of July, so.
It would.
Yeah, you started yours in May, and when was, when did we approve everything, or when did we, do you have everything?
Um, I think, let's say it's July now, so was, was it the June meeting? That said the address was wrong?
Yeah.
Um, so we got that changed, but then once that address was changed, then the insurance company.
Shut it down.
Yeah, we had to have the insurance company have the same address, so we had to.
Does that rely on?
The insurance company was already on board, but we had to change the address for the insurance company.
For the DRAM?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they also had, well, they also had the wrong address.
Yeah, so, okay, that's, I just wanna.
But my whole thing is, is that this was called at a late, I mean, we had two days to, to be here, um, and, you know, they failed the plan, they plan to fail. That's just my, my view on it, so, um, whether we do make them pay for the, the cost of the, having the meeting or not, that's whatever, but I'm just, I'm putting it out there that I think it's, uh, fiscally irresponsible for us to charge the taxpayers the money for us to have a meeting, when this could have been handled.
I agree. I agree with Joel on this, and I would like to see maybe writing, uh, ordinance of some sort that says if any private organization or anybody who needs an emergency meeting like this would have to pay for that in the upcoming times. I know we've done it before, and we talked about, you know, uh, putting a finger down on people's yards and junk, and I think I'd just try to do the same thing maybe for that, too.
But you're setting a precedent that the taxpayers are already paying for the services.
Taxpayers didn't have to pay an extra twenty-five dollars a night if we didn't have this meeting.
Oh, you're stretching it, Ken, you're stretching.
I'm just telling you, they didn't have to. I can understand having an extra meeting to be able to do our budget.
So you, you would like to put in the ordinance that if there is a special meeting, uh, that is called for the purposes, uh, of, uh, a private party, that the private party be charged for the cost of meeting? And I could certainly try to draft something up, have the attorney review it, and put it in front of the council.
A neighboring town does the same thing, that doesn't leak on us, does it?
This also is for the community of Metzow that has been going on for a hundred and forty-some years.
Then they ought to have a process down to get stuff from them on a timely basis.
And with that question, I got one other question about, um, Steve might be able to answer this, I don't know.
Probably not.
Was there, remember when we built the, um, shelter down there for the, the bin?
Yeah.
The Bin Billion?
Yeah, the Bin Billion. Um, was there money given from the city towards that?
Absolutely.
And they had, and they had a twenty-eighteen agreement?
Yeah.
Is that paid off?
Yes.
Yes.
So that keeps. Old settlers paid off their share, uh, maybe two years ago?
Two years ago? Okay, so that takes us, so that twenty-eighteen agreement then is no longer binding, since it's paid.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody else have anything else? Steve, Joe, everything?
No.
Sue?
Oh, I think I said mine.
Doug?
Steve and I are going to economic development group meeting tomorrow morning up at Roland, because it's FYI.
Thank you for attending. The only other thing I had was the Micah Food Pantry was here Tuesday. They had ten residents who were able to get their groceries for a week, so, um, that's a good bonus for the community. Understanding that churches are still in town, this is not a competition with the church pantries, this is a benefit to the residents of the city. So, um, we received a letter from them today, or a email from them today thanking us for allowing them to set up in town, and they were ecstatic about the turnout, so, and said they will attempt to be back.
As far as services go, this Sunday, twelve o'clock, eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty is the pencils and pancakes, so if any kids in the community need school supplies, that is an option, plus there's another option coming up, I can't say the name, but there's another group that is providing at the open houses, I believe, for the schools.
Oh, yeah, the backpacks.
There you go.
Backpacks.
So those are good.
Where's the pencil and pancake?
At the Presbyterian Church. And it's eleven-thirty, it starts Sunday.
All right, provincial citizens, or you guys have anything else? Give it.
I'm a weird girl.
A second.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry I was late. I'm just glad that Joel wasn't behind me or me.